Okay, it is 6:00 PM, so we will call our meeting to order. Could you stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please, Maureen.
Mr. Bembow?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Rayal?
Here.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mrs. McDeve?
Here.
Thanks, Maureen. Okay, start out with the student representative report. Emily, what do you have to share this month?
Okay, so, homecoming went well. There was lots of participation in the dress-up days, and there was a good turnout at the game. And there was also a decent turnout at the game despite it was kind of rainy and maybe it would storm. And then we had both assemblies during the school day, and so there was good feedback. The Friday one during the school day, they used to be at like 5:00 o'clock in the evening. Our queen was Caitlin Becker and our king was Ray Blossfield. For yearbooks, the orders were given out during homecoming week, and this year it's really exciting, the book is in all color. So, that's something I'm personally excited about. And then this past week, we had sort of December Day, which was October 10th. The sophomores went to mid-state, and then they did workshops in the fields offered at mid-state. Juniors met with employees from the community, from different career clusters, and then seniors, we had college planning. And then WKC testing is coming up on November 7th, and the principal student advisory council has first meeting on November 6th.
I will say it was interesting to see the king and queen both in shoulder pads and football jerseys.
Yeah.
First time I've seen that, so. Thank you.
How much did the yearbook go up when it went to color, if I could ask?
It didn't go up in price at all. We cut down on pages. I mean, we cut down about, I think, 30 pages, but then we went through two supplements through spring, so that we include the current spring in the book, and it would just have like a summer delivery for the supplement.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, next we have the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the regular board of education meeting minutes of September 9th, the special board of education meeting open and closed of September 9th, the special board of education meeting closed of September 16th, and the special board of education closed of October 18th.
Motion is second to approve the meeting minutes from September 9th. Special board of education meeting minutes, open and closed session of September 9th. Board meeting closed minutes from September 16th, and special board meeting closed session meeting minutes of October 7th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, comments from citizens and delegations. Do you have any more? Okay, thank you. Okay, committee reports. John, we'll start with business services.
Thank you, John. Business services was called to order at 6:00 PM on October 7th, and we did have a meeting this month. We had four consent agenda items. Does anybody want any of those held out? During non-go, going first one. BS1 was a travel reimbursement guideline. There was some discussion as far as, this has not been increased since 2007? Yes. No, it was 2007. So, we looked at it, and there was some discussion as far as increasing the in-state and out-state lodging rates, and we did, there was a motion made by Larry Davis and seconded by Katie, that the proposal increasing a guideline in state and out-of-state lodging from $135 to $150 per night, and $190 to $235 per night respectively. The next part of that was, is then Wisconsin Dells was a part of the discussion as far as whether we can include that as a area for overnight, since many of the conferences for Osby and the different meeting groups are held in Wisconsin Dells. And most of them will have an evening session and then an early morning session. So, the discussion came that we would allow Wisconsin Dells to be a site of overnight if there was such a meeting, and if it was an overnight, a night before an overnight meeting. Otherwise, that would not be approved. The second consent agenda item was wire access purchase for East Junior High and Meade Elementary. Again, as we've run into with other schools, there was a proposed for 42 wireless access points for the next five years at East Junior High and Meade Elementary. This will provide additional access for staff and students. Administration, or the recommendation was for, from capital data, it cost $46,594.80, with the funding coming from the 2006 technology referendum funds. One of the other things we had a discussion about is how we commend our administration and our department heads for using that referendum money so wisely. One of the public managers, Mr. Scott, had brought up and asked if there was a limit or a cap on that referendum money, and there is no cap, and that was the, one of the nice things, because I remember when the referendum came through, we had the discussion that use it wisely, don't burn it all up all at once, because when you really need it, you may not have it. So, I still want to make a recommend, or accommodations to the administrative team and the department heads for using that money wisely, and for stretching it out and helping the school district along with that. Our third consent agenda item was a discussion on personal appliance fees. We hadn't addressed that from, since 2010, I believe, or 2009, that one also was an older one. And what we did is we increased the fees to what the focus on energy costs are for using those particular appliances. And then with the addition of some of these portable air conditioners, that was an item that was brought up, but then we did add the fact that it needs to be checked through with buildings and grounds for approval because of the wattage and amperage it'll draw, so that you're not on a breaker that'll be blowing out things in the school district, or in the school building or school room. So, we did approve air conditioners, but they do have to meet with building and ground approval, where they can plug them in, where they can use them, and where they can't use them. And then our last item was an inter-district agreement, which is the 66.03 cooperative students to attend a virtual program hearing round. It's from the Stevens Point District, and I believe it is grade six. That's a grade six student coming over to work the virtual program. So, I make a motion to accept all of our consent agenda items, BS1 through BS4.
Second.
Motion is second to approve BS1 through BS4. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Roll call, Maureen. I'm sorry. Please have a roll call, Maureen. Thank you.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
This will be enough.
And then in our updates and reports, we had a donation from a Boy Scout troop in Sam Elzinga, who was a student, I believe, last year. Is that correct?
He graduated.
He graduated, yes. So, student last year as part of his Eagle Scout program. He and his troops replaced the footbridge at the, between the athletic fields at now what's called Wisconsin Rapids Area Medical School, used to be West Junior High, and did a very good job on that. So, we, Ed had sent a thank you letter to him and to the Boy Scout troop, and we, I also went over and visited, because as Ed had said, your attention to detail was unbelievable. And when I went over there, it did look like a professional contractor had put that in. So, they did a fantastic job of putting that in at no cost to the school district. So, with that, I would like to submit the meeting minutes for approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the committee report meeting minutes of October 7th, 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, John. Next, we have personnel services.
Personnel services met last Monday, October 7th, and from that meeting, we have five consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff resignation effective September 25th, 2013, and liquidated damages were paid with that. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation effective September 12th, 2013. Third, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff appointments effective September 25th, 2013. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff reappointments. And fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 12 support staff appointments. Does anybody want anything held out, questioned?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second to approve PS1 through PS5. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I move that the committee meeting minutes of October 7th, 2013, and the two special closed session meeting minutes of September 9th, 2013 be approved as printed.
Motion is second.
Motion is second to approve the committee meeting minutes of October 7th, and the special personnel service committee meeting closed session on September 9th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sandy. Next, head services. Ann?
Okay, thank you, John. We have some revised minutes, and so you should all have those in front of you right now. The meeting was held on October 7th and called to order at 6:28. Jim Scott did have some public comment. He indicated that he had comments regarding specific items and asked if he could share them at this time or when the topics were up for discussion. I stated that he could comment when the topics were brought up. Jim did comment under number four, update, district and school report card results, and submitted some written questions. Then we'll move on to actual items. We had three consent agenda items. Does anyone care to have any of those held out? Okay, the first one was to approve the educator effectiveness grant in the amount of $32,960. Kathy Stebbins, Hints, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, gave us an overview of the educator effectiveness system. Highlights of the system include a more uniform way to evaluate and teacher goal setting. Sandra Hett asked if this was a yearly expense, and Superintendent Colleen Dickman explained that it was. Our second consent agenda item concerns constellation E2 Energy to Educate Grant. Kathy, again, was here and explained that WRPS will collaborate with Port Edwards Public Schools, Rapids Area Catholic Schools, and Nacusa Public Schools to write a grant with Midstate Technical College Renewable Energy Faculty. The grant will be used for the funding of transportation for students, supplies, curriculum, and solar photovoltaic projects. Installation costs of the designed 24KW photovoltaic system will be an in-kind donation from Midstate, as the system will be installed by students in their renewable energy class. And the third one was about youth options request. Trudy DeSimons was here. She's our Director of Pupil Services, and explained how 18 students have applied for youth options classes beginning second semester of the 2013-14 school year. Course requests were reviewed. The district is required to pay for tuition and book expenses for the students if these courses are approved for high school credit. The amount of that was not to exceed $14,408.61, and part of that, the reason that that's not to exceed was because if the student does not get, I believe it was a his, a boy, if he doesn't get the choices, his first choices, then he had some alternate choices that he would take. And I should mention also that the amount for ES2 would be approximately $13,000. So, with that, the committee recommends and I move adoption of those three consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion is second to approve ES1 through 3. Please have a roll call on that, Maureen.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Bembow?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Can I just make a comment? Shouldn't that be assumption Catholic schools rather than Rapids Area Catholic schools?
I was gonna say the same thing. It should be. I think that's what, that wasn't our mistake.
Right, I know what we mean by that. I think they officially changed their name to assumption Catholic schools.
Yes, they do.
All right. Then we'll go on to our updates, and the first one was about the district and school report card results. Kathy reviewed the district and school report card results that were released to the public on September 17th, 2013. It was noted that three of our elementary schools, Grove, Howe, and Meade, met or exceeded expectations. These three schools are Title I buildings and have high percentages of free and reduced families. Overall, the district had very positive report card results, with the district receiving a rating of 72.6, which is only .4 points away from a rating of exceeds expectations. This ranking was higher than all other Valley and Southwood County school districts, with the exception of the Marshville Public Schools. We went on to graduate, the graduation requirement proposal, and Ron Rasmussen, who's principal at Lincoln, shared with board members how during the 2012-13 school year, a committee of teachers examined graduation requirements. After several meetings and review of the DPI waiver, student ACT, and acuplacer test results, a proposal was developed, making some modifications to graduation requirements, starting with the 2016-17 school year. The proposed changes include math credits from 2 to 3, science credits from 2 to 3, eliminating the swing credit, adding a .5 technology credit, eliminating the .5 social studies requirement for senior year, but still requiring three social studies credits, allowing students who have completed four successful WIAA seasons to take one rather than one and a half PE credits, and maintaining the total required credits at 22.5. Sandy had questioned why no world language credits were required, noting that it's easier for students to graduate high school with two credits than to take the two credits at the college level. John Bembow requested that the proposal to eliminate the senior social studies requirement begin in the 2014-15 school year. The committee of teachers from Lincoln High School will continue to share the proposal, and results of their discussions will be shared at the December Educational Services Committee meeting. At that time, the administration will present a proposal to modify graduation requirements. We went on to discuss eighth grade technology assessment, and Phil Bickelhoff, who's Director of Technology, shared results from the Next Generation Student Assessment Survey that was given to eighth grade students, and compared the results to the two previous years. It was noted that improvements were significant from the spring of 2011 to the spring of 2013. Digital citizenship is a targeted area for improvement. The curriculum, a current curriculum doesn't address this area prior to grade eight. And then we heard about the Common Core standards. And in just a minute, Amy Ryan will be presenting a PowerPoint, the PowerPoint that she presented at this meeting. But, for the time being, Amy Ryan, who's our literacy supervisor, presented this PowerPoint, outlining the steps that WRPS has taken to implement the Common Core standards in the English Language Arts area. It was noted by committee members that a great deal of time and effort was put into the maps that are now available in this content area. And with that, I, the committee recommends and I move that we accept the revised minutes for the Educational Services Committee of October 7th, 2013.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the revised meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee meeting of October 7th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ann.
Take over.
Thanks, Ann. So, here's the same PowerPoint. Is that better?
It's on, it's on.
Is it on?
It is, yep.
This is the same PowerPoint that you saw last week, but we'll review it one more time, and as Ann said, a great deal of effort really did go into this work, so I just have to give, teachers have been wonderful. It was a new process that we used, and every teacher in the district really embraced the process. It was new, they took it on, and they really put a great amount of effort into this mapping process that you're going to see in this PowerPoint. So, here we have ELACCSS, which stands for English Language Arts Common Core State Standards, and those are the standards listed below. There are standards in reading for literature, there are standards in reading for informational text, there are standards in reading for the foundational skills, those just go through grades K through 5. Writing, we have argument, informative and explanatory, and narrative standards, there are speaking and listening and language standards. So, unless it's specified, they're all standards K through 12. And there are also English Language Arts, and there are literacy standards in history and social studies, science, and technical subjects. So, not only are we seeing the Common Core State Standards in English Language Arts, but also then specific within the different disciplines, integrating that as well.
Examples of foundational skills being?
More phonics type skills of learning everything from beginning sounds to vowels, CDC words, that type, structural analysis, starting at kindergarten up through grade 5. So, there are four strands, there are reading, writing, speaking and listening, and language. So, our challenge was with the new standards, we really needed to have a clear and shared understanding of the Common Core State Standards, K-12. When we're presented with the standards, they're not something to just check off, because we needed to understand, well, what does this standard mean, and then how, what implication does this have for my instruction? And you want to make sure that all of us have a shared understanding. We've talked through, we've had our hands on these standards, we've talked through them. What do they mean to us? So that, if I'm a teacher at Washington School, that same standard means the same thing to me over as a teacher at Meade or at Woodside. And in that same vein, our fifth grade teachers, then those students that go up into the sixth grade, they have a shared understanding of what do those fifth grade standards mean, and then what do the sixth grade standards mean? So, we really needed to somehow come up with a process that would have not only that horizontal articulation, but also the vertical, K through 12. We didn't want it to be something where teachers were on their own and saying, okay, I do this here, I do this there. It was all about the process. So, what we did is we decided we would unpack, and that's a word that is used a lot with mapping, unpack and translate the Common Core standards, and we created K-12 core maps. And the core word could have been changed up, it could have been a consensus map or a district map. It's just, these are our non-negotiables, this is, these are the core content, and these are the skills, K-12 within WRPS. So, how did we go about doing that? We started last year, actually it was about a year ago at this time, we met for two full days over at River City's Bank, and they graciously let us use their conference room so we could have a little more room to spread out. There were approximately 50 to 60 people there over the two days. We had K-12 grade level and department level representation from all of the schools, as well as the departments from ELI, Career, again, Math and Science, all the coordinators and administrators came over to support and learn about the process as well. And over those two days, we created the initial drafts of the K-12 core maps for reading and informational text and narrative text, but those were just drafts. So, this is first how they did that work. We started with informational text, and they had to work in pairs or triads, and they would pull up one of the standards at their grade level, they would read it through carefully, and they had to paraphrase the key points. What did this mean to them? Then they looked at that same standard, and they looked at the grade level before and the grade level after. So, for example, if I was a third grade teacher, and I was there with my colleague, we would look at grade 2 at that same standard and grade 4. What is the difference? Because the Common Core is built on this staircase of complexity, they become increasingly more difficult. There are little changes at every grade level along the way, so they had to make sure they were noting what the difference was at each grade level. So, they talked it through in their teams, and they had to be as precise as possible. So, here is one of the standards for informational text for fourth grade, and the RI stands for reading informational text, the 4 is grade level 4, and the 2 means it's the second standard. Determine the main idea of a text and explain how it is supported by key details and summarize the text. So, their grade level looked at that standard, and they considered, okay, what are the, what is the content and cognitive demand? What do students need to know? And then what do students need to be able to do? So, the content demand, that would be the nouns. They're looking for the nouns. The cognitive demand, the skills, those would be more the verbs. What do they need to do so they would go through it in their circle, or in this presentation it's highlighted, and then the nouns, and then underline the verbs? So, that would look something like this, and we're starting to unpack it and break it apart. Then they had a map that looked similar to this, where you could see core content and skill. So, in their own words, they were going to then put it for each standard. What did they think that core content was in their words? What is the standard asking that the children need to know? And then the skill, what do the children need to be able to do? So, for example, if it was determine the main idea, if a child was determining the main idea, what would we see him doing? And you can see why this was so important, the process to talk this through, because they had to make sure they had this shared understanding, and they also wanted to put it in more user-friendly terms, using action verbs, choose, demonstrate, write. So, then, after they completed that, they had to go through and edit for quality. So, they had to cross-check the alignment with the standards, the content and skills. They edited for the precise language. They checked the alignment with the levels of understanding, do the verbs match? I'll show you what I mean by that in a minute. And then they had to add any additional agreed upon content and skills, because if they looked at a standard and through their discussion, they realized, oh, you know what? For a student to be able to do this, they really need to have already mastered this, and if it wasn't explicitly stated in the standards, they wanted to make sure to include it so that teachers knew. So, translating the precise language, they wanted to make sure, what would you see students doing in the classroom, and how would you explain to your students what you want them to do? They wanted to make sure that their, the language they were using on the document was precise. When I talked about the verbs, they, if they're replacing a verb, instead of using one that was a little more user-friendly, they wanted to make sure it lined up with the appropriate level of loose taxonomy. So, you didn't want to be replacing a higher level verb with a lower level verb. So, they wanted to cross-check, make sure the verbs were lined up. Then, they had to check that alignment across the grade, so they were responsible for their own grade level, but then they got together in cross-grade groups to check that progression of skills, of content and skills. And they would, so, again, if I'm a third grade teacher, I would meet with second grade and fourth grade, and we'd look at my map and their map, and make sure that we had that progression of content and skills becoming increasingly more difficult. They made any necessary adjustments or edits, and then they added any additional content or skills that they felt needed to be tied at that grade level. Then they ended up with something that looked like this. So, you can see on the far left-hand corner, those are the, our left-hand column, those are the standards. The middle section is the core content, and then the skills are on the right-hand side. This was grade 4. But this was just a draft, because that was only that group of teachers. How would we then, are we going to get this up to all the teachers in the rest of the district? And that's what we did on our professional development days last year. So, we brought the drafts to the teachers, and they met in grade level teams, and they received copies of their maps. They went through, they discussed them, they made any edits, they provided feedback. Then after the PD days, I gathered all that, and we compiled all of their feedback, we reviewed it, and then we made any suggested changes, and then we had final maps. So, last year, over the course of last school year, we ended up creating a final draft of the K-12 informational text core map, the final draft of the K-12 literature core map, and the final draft of the K-5 foundational skills map. So, we still have writing, speaking, listening, and language. So, this summer, members of the group, initial group came together again on August 13th and 14th, and we created those draft maps. And then on our PD day that we just had in September, the elementary teachers reviewed their maps and provided feedback. And then we have an upcoming PD day in November, where the secondary teachers will review their maps and provide feedback. We'll gather all that feedback, we'll make any changes, and by December, we'll have our final K-12 maps completed for all of the Common Core State Standards and English Language Arts. And you received this last week, just the sample of the informational text, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
It seems incredible that you can do that in two days, you know, here and there. It's just incredible. That wasn't a lot of work.
The standards are so reasonable, too.
Yeah, right.
All right, next we have agenda referrals and information requests. If they have anything to make? Okay, move on to the legislative agenda.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, short and sweet.
There's a lot going on, though.
Nothing to report?
Government's closing down, Mary's closing.
Yeah. Okay, next, bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as intended.
Okay. Okay, motion is second that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid. Maureen, will you please have a roll call on that?
Mr. Cranes?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bevill?
Yes.
Mrs. Heff?
Yes.
Next, we went to new business. A, action to approve a professional staff retirement request.
Cindy, excuse me, Cindy Davis has been on my sheet of absence dating back to the previous school year, and is now requesting early retirement. She is retiring at age, so is submitting that request. There, as far as the retirement benefits outlined in the handbook, as related to health benefits, are not applicable because she has not been on the health plan. So this just, this retirement request will align with her intent to retire with the state when we get the medical pension.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the professional staff retirement request.
Second, Beth.
Okay, motion to second to approve the professional staff retirement request. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks, Ryan. Next, 2012, 2012/13 seclusion and restraint report.
On an annual basis, we'll be providing a report, and Trudy's going to do that with us tonight. As you might recall, we had a seclusion and restraint legislation that passed. I think we've been doing some training, we did last year.
Yes, it is. It just turns over.
And on a yearly, annual basis, then you have to.
The impetus for Act 125 happened a number of years ago. There have been isolated incidences where students have been hurt or even die across the nation. Thankfully, they're not very frequent, but we did have one in Wisconsin. It was in a treatment facility up in Rice Lake, and a young lady died being held in a restraint in a prone position. It, of course, made news and prompted everyone to start reviewing their seclusion and restraint practices that people had in place. Because we do in almost every school have students that occasionally either get out of instructional control, or actually are in the process of trying to hurt someone else or themselves. The first two pages of the packet handout is straight from the DPI website. It basically goes through and tells you who is covered. They made it in the act that it covers all students, regular ed and special ed. They never really addressed the use before with non-special ed students, and this time they did. And it applies to all school staff, including independent contractors and their employees and student teachers. So if we hire somebody to come in and do a job of some sort, and they have employees that are working on site, even though they're not ours, they are supposed to abide by the seclusion and restraint regulations that are under Act 125. So it defines physical restraint, it defines seclusion. It gives some examples of what each of them is and what it isn't in some cases, such as just removing a student from the classroom, like outside the door for a couple of minutes to calm down. That's not seclusion. If you put them in a room and you close the door and physically prevent them from getting out, that would be considered seclusion. They go through requirements in the IEP. As soon as you have an incident of seclusion or restraint, and it's not already addressed in the student's IEP, the team must meet as soon as they possibly can, get that provision in there, work it into a behavior intervention plan. Parents should be at the table because they're part of the IEP meeting. So we have a number of requirements that go along with that. If we do have to use it, and we didn't expect to have to use it with a student prior to that.
Excuse me, so if you were talking about IEP, so that would be with special ed students? So you're saying that these rules are going to be applied to non-special ed students also, and they wouldn't have an IEP?
They wouldn't have an IEP, but the rest of the requirements, such as the notification, reporting, and the training, the required training, who's allowed to do it, who shouldn't do it, those all apply to regular ed students, too. The only ones that it doesn't apply to are the police liaison officers in the building because that's what we have them here for, and we have to call them. They've gone beyond our ability to take care of it. It doesn't mean that they necessarily need an IEP, but you could have two kids just break into a vicious fight at some point, and you wouldn't need to physically restrain. We didn't used to have to fill out a formal report, but now we would. So there are notification and reporting requirements. The very last page of this packet is a form that the Wisconsin Council of Administrators for Special Services designed. It covers every aspect required in the law, and, I'm forgetting what it was. It covers all of the required things that they have you having to report. So we just decided to use that form because they have well written and took care of everything. Let's see. Know later than one business day after the incident, we need to notify parents of the incident and tell them of the availability of a written report within two business days after that. So we really don't have a lot of time afterwards either to prepare and keep track of these things. The report goes into the principal's office, kept there until August or July. Soon as school is done, we'll collect those and get the numbers together, so that we should be recording this in September. Training requirements. On the third page, a couple of notes there. We were required to have at least one staff person in each building trained by September 1st. And we met that, in fact, we had a number more in some buildings trained. We ran a lot of trainings in August. The first group we did was the administrative group. We had four people in June and July trained to be trainers in PROACT, which is a seclusion restraint. A lot of it concentrates on ways to avoid seclusion or restraint. So we had four trainers in the district, and we trained a lot for the last year. On the back of that page are the current employees that have been trained. There are 126, and some staff that have left were also trained, so I know we've trained more. And we are now down a trainer, one of the trainers that we had left. So there are three of us now, and we're doing another session coming up on November 1st, 2nd, and 9th, I believe. Now, last year, we had 34 incidences of seclusion or restraint. The number of students involved in the instances was 33, and the number of students who are special ed were 32. My first year here, Steve and I went from building to building, and we viewed seclusion and restraint as it was then, and that was before Act 125. So here in the district, we've been paying a lot of attention to this all along. And as some districts may have reported, some really high numbers. We've just done a little bit more hands-off in the first place, and trying not to use seclusion on the text where necessary.
I know, I was just going to say, in, was it August? I think of 2012, all the administrators, including some people who aren't listed because we're not assigned to a building, were trained. That was quite a sight, I'm sure. You see 2023 administrators in a room.
Trudy, do we know if these same guidelines and requirements are out there for voucher schools?
Yes, they are. They are for, including charter schools, not private and parochial, but anything right now that receives any kind of state or federal. So your charter, your, oh, wait a minute, vouchers.
Vouchers.
I don't know if they've taken this that far yet. They have with the accountability, this is not being mentioned. Sorry, I'm sorry, vouchers.
You give public money, you should have to vote public.
That would be a question I can look into and reply back to you. It's a good question.
Curious to know.
Yep, no, I am too.
Does this change our behavior in any unfortunate way, or are we able to deal with it constructively?
We've been trying to deal with it constructively. It does, I think, sometimes when a student would just run, for example, and if they were looking like they were going to run out of the building, if they weren't running out of the building, running to a busy street, there was not enough of a level of imminent danger to be grabbing and restraining the kid at that time. I mean, you watched and you prepared and tried to anticipate their next move, but the imminent danger injury to the student or to others was the level at which you were really first having a need to touch the student in any way in terms of restraint. So where somebody may have done it before, so they couldn't get out the door, now we sometimes follow up the door.
I think it's made it more challenging for our staff, and we've had, I think, more staff injury.
Well, I, in my prior district and here, I have what I would call daybugs, having behavior specialists come in on a couple of students who were really, they just didn't know what to do anymore. Basically, we were told to clear the room, scrap down computers, fold furniture to the floor, you know, all lock cabinets, I mean, just bare down like you would normally see in a hospital setting or something. And we had to do that in some cases, because they throw things, and it's, it's different.
On that vein, does the state ask amount of injuries staff has received over a year's period?
No, they don't.
They don't? That would be, you could add that to the report.
Yeah, I think. Well, they, they might just, but we could certainly add that because we, we have it. Do you like that on that?
Well, I just, I just think, you know, we need to know what it was before this act and what it is after this act. And if there's significant difference, then I think powers to be need to know that.
That would be very good information for them to have along the way, and I've been at this business a really long time. The changes have gone from where there were state places and institutions and repoms, places that you could send the very, very challenging students. The resources aren't out there anymore. They've closed a lot of them. They'll send them back if they've been there for a while and they can't do anything with them. But we are the institution, the one institution that doesn't turn anyone away. So they can come back to us with all kinds of treatment and be better. They can come back and still be as they were when they went, and in some cases, they move into a different school district depending on the home situation. So sometimes we get fostered students that have been moved from another area of the state placed in the district for some of those various reasons, and then, you know, we try to educate them, you know, with what we have. Any questions? I've got to say, the special ed staff, I mean, all of the staff work hard on all the curriculum stuff, but our teachers and our aides daily out there are, are doing a job that, because they keep doing it, they love it, even the challenges of it, and sometimes dangers go along with it. I've been kicked, I've been punched in the years, and, you know, you just kind of keep going back, and new day with the student the next time you see him or her, or even the next moment, because sometimes they don't even remember one of those instances from like 30 minutes ago. So the state felt they're just fantastic. What gave your day trying to make a difference?
I thank them all for that.
For sure.
Thank you, Trudy. Okay, next, we have discussion and possible action to approve a tentative agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union for 2013-14.
Couple of handouts for the next few items. The, for this item that John just read is the white copy. Did you want to hand both handouts around at the same time? The yellow will be the next to get item. Getting back to, we've had a series of negotiations sessions that have occurred with the GIA, we have a word, a tentative agreement, which is the white copy form, or machine that was supposed to be handed around to the board. We could pick out a number of leaders around the personnel services committee that were involved in those negotiations, so are familiar with those details. What I would comment as far as the tentative agreement that was handed around to you is, this is in our, under Act 10, if you will, what a, an agreement, what the union group looks like. It's pretty much narrowed down or narrowed down to a recognition clause, which is the first article, identification of, of the year that this agreement would be for, which is Article 2. And then Article 3 is in essence what the negotiations are all about. It does outline what that tentative agreement involves. It is an agreement for 2% increase, which the calculation based on that the base wages for that group is a total increase with a group of 6,548 dollars and 82 cents. The recommendation is that tentative agreement for distribution is 2% above base wages or hourly rate for each individual, so 2% across the board for each individual. And with this, the OPA group has ratified on their end, and so we bring forward the board this evening, the recommendation for approval of this tentative agreement.
One of the things I would remind the board about is that this particular group was frozen in salary for the previous two years, which is part of the reason we're bringing forward a 2% at this time.
Any other questions or comments?
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union for 2013-14 as presented.
I second that.
Okay, motion to second to approve a tentative agreement with the Office and Professional Employees International Union for 2013-14 as presented. Could we please have a roll call? Vote, Ryan.
Mrs. Heff?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bevill?
Yes.
Mr. Franks?
Yes. Okay, thanks, Ryan. And next, we have discussion and possible action to approve a wage increase for food service employees.
As far as the food service employee group, we did begin a process of discussions on negotiating increase. However, the food service group did not petition to recertify, and are therefore, by definition of the W, by the WRC, are decertified as a group. So we no longer have conversations or negotiation sessions going on, and therefore are in position of recognizing this as just an employee group that the board can't take action on. The recommendation that we have does fall in line with where the discussion is beginning to go towards anyway. So similar to what Dr. Dick just referenced, this employee group has been frozen in the last two years as well. That and other considerations based upon which we are recommending the board approve a 2% of the increase for this employee group. That would be for the year, this will be year 13-14.
Can they vote to reform a union next year?
Sure.
Excellent. I would make a motion that we approve the wage increase for the food service employees as noted.
So I'm ready.
Okay, motion to second to approve a wage Okay, motion is second to approve a wage increase for food service employees as noted, which was 2% for the 2013-14 fiscal year. Could we please have a roll call vote, Marine?
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayl?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Okay, next discussion and possible action to approve entry level wage rates for food service and office clerical and aide hourly employees.
This is what the yellow sheet, the second handle that I passed around, we referenced regarding the recommendation administration has for establishing entry level wages for the two groups that just brought increased recommendations forward to you for as far as the negotiated increase for OPIU and the agreed upon increase for food service that we just spoke of, that is for existing employees and is an increase over their existing wage rates that they, that those current employees are at. As far as new employees that are hired, the board has discretion for staff sheet, what the entry level wages will be. And the yellow sheet that I hand around is a proposal, a recommendation from administration for establishment of those entry level wage rates. If I can describe what those are referring to and explain the chart a little bit, there are after, let's begin with the OPIU. The first column, raise all the lists, the six different groups that the employees in this union are categorized into. The next two columns that refer to wage rates, the first of those three, what the entry level wage rate was at for each one of these groups with the last collective bargaining agreement that ended on June 30th of 2013. The recommendation that administration has is in the next column over there, which is the starting wage. We are recommending that we go with what was just approved and that is increasing what the, the last entry level rates were at, increasing those by 2% in each, each level. Add a starting wage rate. We are also recommending along with that, that we move to a 60-day period in which the individual has, per course, paid at 95% of that, will ultimately become a regular wage. Like to re-explain a little bit, I think I, in what I was just explaining to you, I twisted those two columns around. The final column on the right is a 2% increase over what the last entry level was at. So if we look at a group one, for example, the last collective bargaining agreement had that entry level wage at $10.91, 2% increase of that would equate to over $11.13. So our recommendation for the new entry level wage would be 2% above what it already was set at with the last collective bargaining agreement. Along with that, what we're recommending is that for each one, each of these positions, that there be a 60-day period for all practical purposes, but we might have previously referred to as probation, a 60-day period in which for 60 working days, the individual makes 95% of that entry level wage rate. So for that group one that I just explained, the entry level recommendation is $11.13. The actual starting rule would be in place for the first 60 days would be 95% of that or $10.57. And you can see the breakdown for each, each group down to one through six. So I guess to recap, we're recommending that the entry level be increased 2%, the same as what all the other employees had just gotten. And it's the two days, 60-day period in which the employee makes 95% of that, of that rate. Similarly, then for the food services, we are, we're also recommending establishing entry level wages that are 2% above what they were at the, what was at the last collective bargaining agreement, also with a 60 workday period, which the employee would make 95% of that rate. The other thing that's unique with the food service recommendations, we are also recommending making some adjustments in the positions, altering that a little bit from where things were at with the last collective bargaining agreement. To begin with, you see at the bottom of this listing, the position school lunch aid, and you'll see that they strike through that entire line, row at the bottom. We're recommending that because that is a position that really doesn't exist anymore. And I believe Julie Bree is still here in the background.
I am, I am right here.
And I'm going to defer to her if there are specific questions that the board may have about these positions, but this is a position that for all practical purposes does not exist and has not been filled, so we're recommending taking it off the listing completely. The other recommended adjustments fall within what was previously the category of baker-service cook. And based on the way in which our food service operations are currently functioning, the baker position is very similar to the second cook position and a la carte position. I know as Julie has described oftentimes for the, what were the second cook is doing, very similar, if not the same, as what the baker has, is doing. And so in addition to that, the service cook, it's felt under current operations in many respects oftentimes has more responsibility than what previously was a, a position above a paywise. And a service cook would be those, would be the cooks in the buildings that are not preparing the actual meals. They would otherwise be serving as that head cook, you know, a cook at Woodside, for example, where the meals are actually being prepared at the high school, delivered to the building. And yet that individual in the building has a lot of the paperwork responsibility for the kitchen and distribution and has really actually some more responsibilities than oftentimes with all the second cook. So there's recommendation of up the service cook position above the second cook a la carte and also slide the baker position up into the same category as service cook and a la carte cook.
Second cook.
Second cook.
Second cook, a la carte cook.
Right. Excuse me, I'm sorry to interject, but I just want to clarify, that service cook position actually does prepare food at the, at the satellite schools. There are certain things that are prepared, like in high school and sent to a few of those satellite schools, which is Grove, Washington and Woodside. But those cooks at those, at those schools aren't actually considered the head cooks at those satellite schools. They are preparing food. There's a very significant amount of preparation that they actually are doing and serving. And they have the role as well of being the head cook and interacting with the principal and the staff in terms of managing things and the additional paperwork that goes on with that. So their, their job responsibilities are different and are, I would say, more significant in that respect than a second cook or a la carte cook. He does not have that responsibility. So, sorry to interrupt, Ryan, but I just wanted to hear.
Thank you.
And my answer.
Thank you. The, the other, the other two details that I want to specify about these proposals in general, and with them taking effect if you approve them is, is number one, if you do approve them this evening, it will take effect tomorrow. The positions that we have filled, for example, with the clerical groups that school has begun, we have been operating under, under the practices that were in place with the collective bargaining agreement that ended in June. So they would, they would take effect starting tomorrow with new employees that are hired. And that's the second point that I want to emphasize is what you see on this yellow sheet is applicable to new hires. This does not affect our current employees that are already placed in positions. Now, the one and other, how we have to go along with that is should this be approved moving forward? Current employees, if they move positions, if they've been employed in the district, a new job comes up, it's a post they made, they apply for it, they're selected, they move into it, these new rates will be applicable to them if an employee chooses to switch positions or switch levels as soon as it takes effect. Now, it does not happen often, but that could become, it could happen where we actually have someone in clerical group that is at a level six and chooses to want to post a do a level five job. They'll be operating under these salary rates. And the other reason why that's significant moving forward is moving out of the collective bargaining agreement into a handbook and establishing and having established entry level wages as such, is longevity is no longer applicable. When an existing employee with the collective bargaining agreement expiring, as their, that longevity they had at the time of the collective bargaining agreement expires, that longevity is considered a part of their base wage at that point in time. It's not, it stays there. However, if they post into a hire for a different position, they would, for all practical purposes, lose their longevity. In those circumstances where things have come up along these lines, we have been speaking to the employees who may consider posting to other, other jobs where they would, they would switch classifications. If employees were to move positions, if they're looking at the clerical group, they would pay what they move and stay within the same group, they would still stay at the same wage they're at now, similar with, you know, if that head cook from Howe was going to move over to be the head cook at Grant, same, same situation if they're not moving out of their group. Their, the wage they had when the bargain ended would stay the same. It's if they switch groups that they could be impacted by this if it grew.
Does the fact that they would lose their longevity, does that discourage and hinder us from doing a good job of keeping people in positions and moving them around, Monley?
I don't think it discourages anything. I think those individuals that have moved positions, have moved out of their group, have done it for, for personal reasons or because, the examples that come to mind would be people who are either in year-long positions and would rather go to a senior employee or they're in a position that, that works through June and starts up in August and they want more summertime off or want fewer hours because they, the examples that I can think of is want to spend more time with grandkids or are getting close to retirement and just wanting to have shorter hours than they're working right now. I don't think that changes salary because they're already choosing to take a position that pays less by, by category in fewer hours. I don't think that's going to dissuade them.
Right, and we don't, we don't move people. You don't just say, okay, you're going to go from group one to group two or that's their decision to do.
Correct.
Correct.
There's no further discussion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the entry level wage, if I can say it, entry level wages rates for food service and office clerical and aide hourly employees.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second to approve the entry level wage rates for food service and office clerical and aide hourly employees. Marine, could we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayl?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes. And I'm looking at, thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Julie. And I'm looking at the calendar, we have a consortium meeting in Plainfield next Monday, so maybe we can coordinate how many of us are going and when we should meet, where.
Who's to know?
And there was also something.
Plainfield.
Plainfield. Something that was passed out to each of the board members about direct deposit. We can look over that and get a hold of it. Marine, I guess with any questions you might have, I wish to get that form turned back in.
I think the AM needs to schedule a meeting.
Okay.
Certification, canceling?
We already did that in July. Well, the state, the state is going to let us know hopefully tomorrow what our aide is. And depending on what that number happens to be, we may or may not have to schedule a meeting, but we won't know really till tomorrow unless there's something. I mean, there's legislation.
If they want to, you wouldn't need to, you won't know until they get the A's. You can change this. We won't know.
There, there is current legislation out there right now. They're having hearing on it tomorrow, modifying the aide, and then they won't tell us until October 31st and then you won't have to certify it until November 6th. So that'll push it out, but again, we won't know that until tomorrow. So we'll have to be in touch with all of you about sending it or not.
There's also the sign up appear for opportunities to attend events, if they want to look at that and sign up for anything. And I guess with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.